You're roughing or posting or bothering? Well, let's get showing. Do you think move a little closer?
Yeah, Mark, you can sit up here.
Yes. Hello down there.
The opportunity and father.
I don't know what to call you. Can we get you on a switch? Please say your name and please.
I've got that email to me. You'll go to the second floor.
We will call the Grand Forks County Commission meeting to order. It is October 3rd, 2023. Commissioner Rusted and myself are here. Commissioner Peach, Hagan, and Ingon are on Zoom. So before we get started, we'll start with the first meeting.
With wings to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, America, equal and equal with liberty and justice for all.
If you all get a chance to look at the minutes from the previous meeting, I would like, accept a motion to approve. I'll make the motion, Commissioner. Okay? Do I have a second to approve the minutes?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Hagan. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Okay, approval of the order of agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Who, do you have something?
Yes, I would like to add IT to the agenda. Evelyn would like to talk about a couple of grants. So I would suggest that we do it as 6A after Karma Hansen speak, Carmen Hansen speaks about safe kids.
Okay, I think, I think we're gonna put it after the special event permits.
Okay, not a problem. I would move approval of the order of the agenda with that addition.
Okay, we, excuse me, we have one more to add to the agenda also.
So I guess I would make a motion to approve the additions that Commissioner Peach made, as well as to add a 15B underneath unfinished and new business, and forgive me, Bob, I.
Michelle, peel.
Okay. Okay, so I would, I guess that would be my motion to stay at, as, add Evelyn to 7C and Michelle to 15B.
Okay, uh, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Right, approval of the consent agenda, bills, employee status changes, overtime, bond for checks reissue, game of chance permit, Grand Forks Air Force Base. Do I have a motion to approve that, or does anybody want anything? Paul?
I would move approval of that motion.
Hey, Commissioner Peach makes the approval. Who, who will second?
No, second.
Hey, Kimberly, will second. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. All right, Karma Hansen.
All right. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to come today. I just wanted to come and express my gratitude for the support that the commissioners voted, the support for our safe kids programming. Can you bump, she's gonna pull up the, Debbie's gonna get the PowerPoint. You guys have a copy of this in your bags or in your packets. But I just wanted to just give you a really brief overview, and I promise I'm gonna get you to your football game by five thirty. I'll, for what I can do. Um, we received the check from the county, and we are super grateful for the support that you provided for Safe Kids. And I just wanna give you a kind of a quick overview of some of the things that your funding has helped to support along with other people. So you can go to the next slide. Many of you may know that Safe Kids has been operating in the Grand Forks area for over 30 years now. You go to the next one. One of the big programs that your funding helps to support is program called Kids Don't Float. It's held every end of April or beginning of May. This year, we did seven sessions over three and a half days. We trained 709 kids and about 75 adults. It is a two-hour, very interactive class where the kids get to learn about how to fill a life jacket, the effects of hypothermia, how to throw rescue devices and rescue somebody that might be in trouble. The Sheriff's Department is there talking about alcohol and impairing your ability. And then the kids get to drive around in those little boats that you see in the pool. I'm not gonna go into the details of it. I think I probably shared before, but we know of three kids in the community who were saved after the efforts of a young girl, an eight-year-old, who had been at this class about three weeks before an incident occurred in a Grand Forks apartment pool. And so we know that the work that we're doing is important around the topic of water safety. You can go to the next one. We have also done a lot of work over the last couple of years in setting up life jacket loner stations. A lot of people maybe can't afford them or have just a one-time use for them. So we have had a longstanding partnership with the YMCA in which we provide life jackets infant through adult life jackets. If people can check out much like a library book for up to two weeks and use them free of charge. They can take as many as they need. That is a life jacket loner program. We also have, over the past couple of years, started life jacket loner boards in which we put boards with life jackets hanging on poles or caravans right next to them. One of these that you'll see on here is at the Laramore Dam. One of them is at Stump Lake, which I know is out of this county, but the one at the Laramore Dam is in the county and has been very widely used over the last couple of years. People just take it at the beginning of the day and leave it there at the end of the day. So they have ready access to all the different sizes. You can go to the next one. We have had another program that's been going on for several years in which we are trying to, number one, raise awareness about medications being the number one cause of poisoning in kids. It's not kitchen or bathroom cleaners and garage stuff. It's actually things that I, as a nurse, am sending home with patients, is the leading cause of poisoning in children. And so we've been trying to do these med take back events in an effort to get members of the community to know that if they have unused or expired medications in the home, that they should dispose of them. So we do a drive-up, drop-off. We do a community event three times a year in March during Poison Prevention Week. Then again in June, kind of around city cleanup time of year. And then in September, we also do two of them at the Grand Forks Senior Center because of the fact that many of them don't necessarily drive or can't come to those events. So we have the Sheriff's Department, they're collecting meds. You can see the totals on there. We did 75 pounds, 52 pounds, 62 pounds, and 52 pounds. Our last senior center event of the year will be happening tomorrow, actually, or this Thursday, whatever Thursday is. And so that is, not only are we talking about bringing them to those events, but also the fact that there exists permanent drop boxes that the Sheriff's Department manages in the front door of the Law Enforcement Center downtown, at the East Grand Forks PD and at the UNDPD. We got a box installed there a couple of years ago, and that's a pretty highly used one as well. And then we also talked to them about safe storage, distribute free cabinet locks to anybody that needs them. And so those events have been really successful in raising awareness about the poison danger in our community. You go ahead to the next one. We've done a lot as an ER, as a hot, all true as our lead agency. And so we have access to ER data. And over the years, we have seen a huge increase in the number of ATV incidents involving kids where they used to be kind of farm vehicles. They've turned into recreational vehicles, used oftentimes at lake places and outdoor venues. Kids that aren't old enough to drive yet, they get put on ATVs. And we're seeing an increase in the number of incidents that have occurred from those vessels. So we've done a lot of community education around that topic, talking about the training that's required to operate them safely, the fact that there are youth-sized ATVs that are significantly safer than the adult ones that can weigh up to 800 pounds. And then talking about the proper equipment that they need to have. So we've done a lot of that around the region over the last year. Next one. One of the things that people most know us for is our car seat checkup events. You will see on here the data from our 2022 events. We're obviously not done with 2023 yet. But in 2022, we checked a total of 1,002 car seats. And then that was, that's the map, kind of of both North Dakota, Minnesota. Everywhere where there is a star are the communities in which we conducted an event, some of them multiple events in that community. And then we also did a huge number of distributions to clients that need. A lot of those clients actually come through the county, through county social services or through Public Health, Do Americans, that type of thing. And so we, we do a lot of work in the area of car seat checkup events. Next one. We also, in order to continue to do the work that we do with the car seats all throughout the region and the state, we need to make sure that we have technicians, people that are trained. It is a four-day training that is required to serve as a certified child passenger safety technician. We have done two classes here in Grand Forks this year, and then in several other communities around the state. There you'll see one of our classes of people. We can train about 20 people at a time. We look for them to come through agencies that are transporting within that agency and also anybody who might be interacting with kids. Our Bringing Home Baby course is one that we teach for expectant parents. We do a lot of that work. We offer the class twice a month and train new and expected parents on how to use their car seat. It's, is it easy?
It took two officers and one of your technicians to help him with that. They were very well needed.
They're not easy to put in. Society just thinks you go to the store, you buy a car seat, you plop it in the back of your car, and that is not the way it works whatsoever. So those Bringing Home Baby classes are a way to try to help those new parents out so they're not struggling in the backseat of that car for hours upon end. So.
We're not taking that money for the average person.
We're there for the average, the above average, and the questionable. So Bringing Home Baby, another one of our car seat areas of work in which we do a lot of, lot of education. Next one. Safety on Wheels and Safety Around Schools. These are two programs that we've currently seen the staff in our office lately because we have been out and about in schools. The Safety Around Schools, we take in a group of people that see every kid in every school and take them out during their gym class. We teach them safety tips about the four ways kids get to school, biking, bus, walking, and motor vehicle. And then our Safety on Wheels is a program in which we go into every elementary school. In the fall, we do the public schools. We did our last school today. And then in the spring, we do all the regional schools and the private schools. So our Northwoods, our Thompsons, our Laramores, our Lakotas, places like that. The Safety on Wheels, we do a head injury presentation, and then we get to reply comments to the kids. If they can't afford it, we'll give them a helmet for free and teach them bike safety tips. Next one. Here you see some of our Safety on Wheels events going on. We do partner with the Grand Forks Optimist Club, who in the Grand Forks schools, they come in a week after we're in doing our bike helmet distribution, and they do a rodeo. You'll see some of those going on in the parking lots there. And then you will see, down on the bottom, you'll see some of the statistics of the number of helmets that were distributed over the last year. And top left-hand picture is a picture of one of our classroom presentations we're doing. Next one. Here is our Safety Around Schools. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time because you guys have pictures in your packet, but these are a lot of our team doing the safety stations in and around the schools about that ways that kids get to school. So you could take a look at some of those photos. Next one. We also do a lot of work in partnership with AAA in training both crossing guards, which are the adults that you see out there with the stop paddles and the vests, and with the safety patrollers, which are the youth of our community. They're typically a fifth grader at our elementary school, since that's the highest grade we have. I was just saying to Commissioner Ross that last week, or two weeks ago, I trained 15 fifth graders at Kelly School, and they are now out every morning and every afternoon helping kids get off and away from the buses and, you know, get their bikes into the racks and reminding them to go to the crosswalk, not cross the middle of the street. We currently have six schools in the community that do the safety patrol, and we've got other communities around the region that are, we're looking to get trained as well. Next one. We, this has been a really popular class. During COVID, we started a foster parent training course. And we did that because the foster parents in the county are required to have a certain number of continuing ed credits in order to maintain their licensure. And so we started this via Zoom, so they didn't have to try to find a sitter, pay for a sitter, go out of the house. We do them once a month, and they get a free CEU. This class is now spread where we're training foster parents all across the state of North Dakota. We get between 80 and 100 people on that training each and every month. Next one. Smart Sitter and our Safe At Home Alone. These are a couple of classes that we've been doing for people, for young kids who are either coming home alone or babysitting other children. We have done some special classes where they're really at risk, low-income kids who maybe couldn't afford the class but are coming home where there might be a single parent home, and they're home alone for extended hours in the evening. And so that training has been a great course for them to learn some safety things. And the next one. The other thing that we've got going on, and I think the recent bus crash in Nelson County serves as a perfect example of why this bus training is really important. We, we know that there are a lot of issues with transportation of kids on buses and maybe them not being transported in the best and safest way. And this is a course that we have started offering and just recently got the first two certified instructors in the entire state to teach this curriculum. And so we're doing a lot of work to try to get the state, the state of North Dakota up to speed. And that's all starting here in Grand Forks County. Next slide. These are Safe Kids monthly meetings. Our coalitions are open to anybody, parents, teachers, law enforcement, fire, anybody, anybody that has an interesting kids, we invite them to come. We have a Zoom option to join. And we have people from all around the county, the region, who attend those. And we're just really grateful to be able to call all the partners in injury prevention and have an interest in Safe Kids together to talk about our strategic planning and the activities of our coalition. Next one. I think it's the last one. I won't go into the subcommittees, but I did list on the sheet what our different subcommittees are that place more focus on these areas to try to kind of figure out what the issues are that we need to be addressing. So we're looking at the data and then trying to address them in that way and find the right partners to be at the table with us. Next one. So I come back where I started. I thank you. I thank you as a commission for your support. I thank you for the work that you do and thank you for letting me come today to share a little bit of an insight into the busy world of Safe Kids. So thank you. Any questions or anything that I can address?
I don't know. I would, you know, I would just like to add, you know, the 30 years that Safe Kids has been at Grand Forks, I've probably been part of it for those whole 30 years. But a lot of what I do is because of what you do. And as far as the safety patrol program goes, how that has bloomed over the years, and what I find astonishing is they have nothing in Fargo. They can't get that program going in Fargo at all. And it's, it's great how that thing has bloomed. A lot of it's because of you. So.
Well, I, I have a fabulous team that does a lot, a lot, a lot of work and go in a lot of different directions. So thank you, Commissioner Ross.
Curiosity question. We were mentioning earlier how many, how much medication you got back. Did I read that right? 75 pounds of pills?
Yeah, and the interesting thing is, Commissioner Ross said, we take liquids, pills, patches, ointments, creams. Some people will drop up, come up, and they'll give you a bottle, and it's stuff that on the street would sell for $40, $80, $100 a pill. And there are times where people will pop open a trunk, and they'll have had a relative who just passed away and are cleaning out the house, and they don't know what to do with it. So it varies, but some of the stuff that we collect is stuff that you're darn glad it's getting out of homes and dorm rooms and cars and stuff like that. And the event, while you have the permanent drop boxes in town, the event also gets us a lot of TV and radio and newsprint to say, you need to get this stuff out of your homes, whether it's at these drive-up, drop-off events or over at the Law Enforcement Center, dropping it off on the ground level in their deposit box there at the pharmacies.
Now to guess like 10% of the, that amount. That's crazy.
Yeah. No, Sheriff Snyder will haul it away, and oftentimes it's big, huge garbage bags full, and they take it and get it all properly disposed of. So.
Wow. Thanks for what you do.
Yeah. Any other questions? Great. Thank you so much, and thank you again for your support.
All right, special event permits.
Commissioners, thank you. My name is Matt Wallack. I'm the owner of the Grunron Grill and Bar at Grand Forks. And I'm here seeking to special use permits for serving alcohol in Grand Forks County.
Okay. Where is this event?
One of the events is at the Anger, yeah, over at Grand Stack, and the other one is Gorman Field.
Okay.
I submitted all the drawings.
Uh, should we do them separate? Yeah, okay. So we'll do the one out at the Grand Sky first.
Okay.
The event permit. Now, the sheriff's reviewed all these, I would imagine. All right, so do I have a motion to approve that event permit?
I'll approve all of the event permit at Grand Sky.
Okay, do I have a second?
No, second.
I can, Commissioner Hagan, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion is carried. The next one is?
Gorman Field.
Gorman Field?
It's a drone biz event. Dana Sandy is the point of contact.
Of approval for the Gorman Field. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that, that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Pete, second. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Chairman Ross and Commissioners, I'm looking to get a grant signed so I can accept it. It, I just wasn't notified last week, and it's 10 days limit time. This one is on my security grounds, and it's for adding cameras to the elevators and the public stairwells and the common, the large common space on each floor. You know, we could use way more, but our capacity is only, we could, our capacity is only so much. So this is just a kind of a small project, but it'll take care of a lot of security we need. The request came originally from Bill, from some mischief that was going on. You could speak more to that maybe. But a grant just came available right when we were talking about it, so I applied for.
Okay, you're seeking, go ahead. You're, you're seeking permission for him to sign it?
Yes.
Okay, so this grant, does it require county funds or is it all grant?
Zero county funds.
Zero county.
Zero amounts.
That's what I, like, you use the motion, make that move approval to allow the chair to sign the grant.
Hey, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Pete, seconds. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Both same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you. I have one more where I have to beg forgiveness because I signed it not knowing I needed the chair signature on it. That one was in March of this year. I have spent no funds on it yet, so if you decided you didn't want us to do it. That one is cybersecurity grounds. It's for remote support software, replacing what we have. So it's not really spending any additional money in the future. Security training, which we would have been having to up anyhow, but I get lower my training budget on the 2024 budget then.
Okay.
And multi-factor authentication, which we have to get into anyway. So that will be a future cost besides. That one does have a 10% match, however, state cut down 5% of it, so we only have $2,000 match. And that would come out of the IT.
You have that out of the IT. Okay, do I have a motion to, or any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Since when Evelyn started, I'll take responsibility for her not knowing that she needed to get permission from the county commission. So I'll take responsibility for that because she's in my portfolio. So I apologize for not explaining that to her, and I would move approval of this grant to move forward.
Okay, second. Second by Commissioner Rusted. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you. That'd be the contract.
All right.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here to talk about a JPA, which will be the American Civil Association of Counties in reference to the collection and distribution of the 911 fees. Currently, the way the 911 fees are collected is that the 911 fees go to all of the PSS. And you can probably scroll down, Debbie, to try the fourth slide. I'll go to the fourth. Yeah. Or, sorry, backup one. And that's kind of hard to read, but what happens is the 911 fees come directly to the local level. And right now, there's a surcharge for the siren system, the statewide radio network of 50 cents, and then 10%, 10 cents, which goes back to the North Dakota Association of Counties for managing our 911 phone system. And then the rest of it stays here for capital, local charges to maintain our, our center. What the JPA for the Association of Counties is proposing is this new JPA is that the funds would go to the Association of Counties. They would hold, withhold the 50 cents and the 10 cents, and then distribute onto the local level. What we're finding with some of the telco companies is that we don't know their footprint within the state. We don't know how many telephone lines that we really should have, how much fees we should be getting. And since they already work with those vendors, this would create the process for them to work with the Public Service Commission and create more of an auditing trail and also provide an easier administration of the fees and cut out the middleman, so to speak, and make it easier for auditing. There have been 25 counties that have approved of this process, and then it would go in place January 2024. And the other piece that the North Dakota 911 Association is working on is forming a committee where we would have a subcommittee that would include 911 leaders as well as an auditor that would be appointed from the state auditors to make sure the process is consistent with auditing process and safe and follow any new updates. So overall, everybody believes that this would be beneficial to administering tracking and hopefully finding more funds that aren't there.
How do you feel about it?
We fully support it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Is there any questions?
No. So do you need any action from us?
We do need your approval. This, because the county is the taxing entity. We do need approval by the county commission chair, and then also it would be signed off by Debbie after it would be approved through the commission.
Do I have a motion to approve the joint powers agreement?
Yes, I would move approval on that motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Along with your signature and Debbie's.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Commissioner Hagan, all those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
All right.
That's you.
That's me.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I have scanned in on page 69 all the properties that we took over to like with taxes after October 1st. October 1st fell on Sunday, so they hadn't till 5:00 PM October 2nd to pay their oldest year of taxes. There are five crossed off on the list. So from the time this was scanned on Friday until today, there were five people that came in that are now off the list. I would anticipate by third Tuesday in November, we probably have half of those paid. But right now, I need a motion. I recommend the board approve the appraised value of the real estate acquired by tax deed and to set the minimum sale price at the minimum, at the amount of three years taxes due plus specialist assessments.
and to set the minimum sale price at the amount of three years taxes due plus specialist assessments, penalties, interest and cost, plus an amount equal to the estimated taxes and special assessments for the current assessment year and to set the property appraisal gearing for October 17th, 2023 at 4:00 PM.
Okay, do I have a motion to what she said? Commissioner Hagan, did you make the motion?
Yeah, exactly, she read it.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Pete seconds. Alright, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion's carried. Sheriff.
Chairman Ross, members of the commission, today I come requesting a signature from the chair on the special operations group joint powers agreement. Group consists of multiple entities, Minnesota and Grand Forks County here in North Dakota that comprise our UAS team, SWAT, bomb, CNT, our special operations team. So what we're doing is updating signatures as the commission here, we have a chair every year. Along with that, there's an addendum that has now added Norman County, Minnesota. As part of these special operations groups, they have brought on, they will be bringing on, I should say, I believe it's in November upon completion of his probation, a member to the regional SWAT team. So just requesting that the chair sign that and we'll forward that on to the.
I'll move permission for the chair to sign that.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Hagan. All those in favor of the special operations group joint powers agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried.
I have nothing for it, thank you.
The engineer, Mr. West.
Good afternoon. A couple items for consideration today. The first one would be our agreement with the state of North Dakota and FEMA for the spring's flood event. Contract submitted that should be in the packet. Ms. Wongstead has reviewed. And to our knowledge, it's the same as all the other ones we had the past few years as far as requirements. And this allows us to get funds to rebuild our roads and the town just as well too. So with that, I will ask for chairman's signature on page 16.
Any questions from anybody? Do I have a motion to approve?
We approve chair's signature.
Okay, Commissioner Rusted makes the motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Hagan. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion's carried.
Thank you. The second item per consideration would deal with the guilty shed specifically off of our implement. If the board remembers way back in March 21st of this year, we approved the basic terms of the agreement, the price. And when we would close on the property, in the meantime, we had some discussions back and forth as far as insurance concerns. And some more of the details of the shed and all that would work. I think we have that figured out now. One thing that was maybe a little different was they're asking for 30,000, 30,000 in earnest money. And they would like to have the option to close in February of 2025 as well too. Initially, we were thinking the end of January of 25. They wanted to add another couple months or another month to it, which is, that's fine with us, in case some paperwork issues.
Over 25.
25.
Oh wow, okay.
Yeah. Then the other part that was a little bit of back and forth between their insurance, our insurance, what now is. We would like to be able to use the shed for the next couple of winters, heat our, sorry, equipment off and then let our operators be able to use the bathroom, so.
Yeah.
Some of those details, they worked out and we did it to the purchase agreement as well too. The seller is okay with this, I believe. I don't want to speak for Ms. Wongstead, I think she's okay with it. And we would have the money in our budget to cover that risk money. With that, I would ask for approval and stand for questions and chairman's signature.
Okay, excuse me, any questions from anybody?
I have a question for Nick.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hagan.
Nick, I think the, the total price is within the budget that you had planned for replacing the shed initially, is that right? So there's no new money coming into this that we have to come up with?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Little questions.
Go ahead.
By any chance, but why is the, why are the closing costs 100% on the county?
That was, we would do a lot of the legwork ourselves. And the only closing cost we should have is just a little bit, we would have to pay the title company. It'd be pretty miniscule and I guess that was.
It helps with the deal for the transaction, I mean, they're.
They did, okay.
Yeah, just curious.
Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Commissioner Rusted makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
The second's the motion. All those in favor of the guilty shed approval signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion's carried.
Thank you, that is all that I have. And then we're gonna need a really good dry fall to get all our projects done. But things have been.
Weatherman said.
So we really need it. We got all those, we got one aluminum box called we're done. One other one started and the other six to go.
Sure.
The one concrete one was opened up yesterday. So that's done, but our crews have done a lot of work. We've had a really good year.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Got quite a few things to run through, so I'll own through quick, but please stop me for questions or anything for clarification. Last commission meeting, Commissioner Rusted had asked that I look into franchise utility fees as another source of revenue for the county. And with Ms. Wongstead and Ms. Nelson's help, we did quite a bit of research. And what we found is that the century code currently only allows for cities to collect franchise utility fees and that counties currently do not and that the century code would need to change for counties to do so, so the legislative action. Ms. Maureen Storsted or the city, the city finance director, she sent me some information on revenue collected for 2022. 3,363,146 dollars the city collected, so it was a good amount of revenue. So at this point, really leave it up for commission discussion with what you would like staff to do. If the commission would like to pursue this, then just start having some discussions with our legislators and we get a county priority in the next legislative session.
You know, I, my personal opinion is I think we should pursue something like this. Because not only is Grand Forks County able to use some of these funds, I'm sure other counties are in the same predicament as we are, so. Commissioner Rusted, I'm sure you concur with that.
100%, yeah.
Yeah. So I think if we could reach out to our legislators and.
Never too early to start.
Century code change, yeah.
Okay, then we will continue to work on this.
Any other comments from any other commissioners?
Tom, could you, did you say the dollar amount that the city earns? Sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Hagan, for 2022, it was 3,363,146 dollars. And that was from CATV, NOTAC and XL.
Yeah, I completely concur that that's something that we should definitely look into getting our hands on.
So, so we'll, we'll start working with Mr. Burst as well in the Association of Counties.
Is that something Aaron Burst is willing to take on or have, have those discussions not taken place yet?
He, he's definitely willing to, so we did reach out to him too, sir. I just thought of if he knew of other counties that were collecting these, he wasn't aware of any, but he was happy to work with us if we move forward.
Because I would anticipate that if this is going to be something the Association of Counties and specifically Grand Forks County pursues, that there might be a rather robust pushback against us from the utility companies and their lobbyists. So there, there might be a moment to drop the gloves. Moments.
Yeah. I still think it's worth pursuing.
I do too, yeah.
We'll, we'll do so.
Okay.
I think.
Mr. Ford?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea of what the potential is for franchise fees out in the county as opposed to the, the huge opportunities that Fargo and, and Grand Forks have? Have you talked about it with anybody else such as the people from Cass County and, and so on? I mean, this, this sounds like a great plan, but getting it through the legislature is another matter, I suspect.
Concur, Commissioner Hagan, so the quick answers, I've not had discussions with Cass County or Burley or Ward or any other counties at this point. But we'll be doing so as, as now that we've, that I've been directed by the board to keep moving on this, I'll be reaching out to those counties. I would concur with Commissioner Rusted. Those firms, they have great lobbyists, so it, it'll, it'll take some work, but we'll, we'll want to start the groundwork right now. We have some time.
Would it be cable companies and fiber networks and, and electrical and that kind of thing or what, what else would you see?
The, yes, yes, the short answer there is yes. When I look at what the city, who the city collects from, you had CATV, which is Canada TV, I believe, and NOTAC Power Cooperative and then XL, which is Touchstone Energy Cooperative, so TV and, and utilities.
Sounds good.
Okay, very good. The second item, last, no, September 5th commission meeting, I was asked to go back to Icon and have them update the 2016 COB space utilization study along with the, the other law enforcement plan that we had done in 2019. Mr. Chair, after visiting with Ms. Wongstead, I'd like to scratch the agreement that is in front of you. We're not ready to pursue that. That being said, I wanted to provide you with some updates based on some conversations I've had with the city administrator, Todd Bealan. Right now, the, the proposal from Icon is $50,000 to do another space utilization study. That would include all the departments. And talking with Ms. Nelson, looking at capital improvements, not asking to approve that today. Mr. Bealan has suggested if the county does move forward with the utilization study update, to do so as if public health is no longer in the county office building. Also, I, I, and I know I mentioned this to Commissioners Ross and Rusted a few weeks ago. With the last lease extension in Northeast Dumen Services, we have almost the entire fifth floor south, except for four state employees remaining in there. If the county wanted to ask, when we go to extend the lease in 2025, it is the commission prerogative to say we want the entire floor. And so in other words, those four state employees would need to go to fifth floor north or somewhere else. If that were to happen and just if public health was moved out and into a different facility, the commission would have 20,000 square feet of open office space to use at your discretion. So I think moving forward with a space utilization plan is definitely worth it. And it's also worth having Icon do it as if we had all that office space available to us and then go from there.
Space utilization cost though for that, to do that study is 50,000.
Yes, sir, that was what they quoted. It's just to update what they already had. Yes, it would, however, Commissioner Rusted, if, if you look through and I can send it to all the commissioners, I now finally have an electronic copy. It's, the COBs space utilization is much different than it was in 2016. So they basically have to sit down with every department head and start over.
So in your professional opinion, is that a wise expense?
I think it is and this is why, let me elaborate. We're, we're having to figure out what to do with state's attorney's office, emergency management, the sheriff needs a home. And with 20,000 square feet in the COB, and I'm not suggesting moving the sheriff into the COB, I'm not saying that at all. I think with 20,000 square feet available, it would be good for the commission to have all options presented before you decide to build any more facilities. I do think Commissioner Rusted that if we asked another company to do it, it would cost more just because they'd be literally breaking the eggs and going to the supermarket first, buying eggs and then breaking them. I, I, I think the commission should move forward with it if it, it's up to you. But I, I think we gotta take a hard look at the space we're gonna have available to us and how to use it.
You know what the initial cost of the study in 16 was?
I do not, sir, no. I was, that was, Mr. Nero, he was, he edited that one.
What now? When was it done?
2016. Oh, that, no, he was gone by then. It was, it was completed in 2016.
Okay. He was gone when I started in 15, so I don't know who was running it. Wouldn't that have been true?
We don't need to take action today.
No. No.
We can think about it.
Yeah.
Definitely.
I've read my mind.
Last name started with R. Okay.
So we'll just kind of wait on that?
Yeah.
For further direction, very good.
So Tom, real quick, so for the, for the $50,000, I mean, are they going to present multiple options, multiple price ranges for the different options? Or are we gonna get, you know, this is our best guess with it, should work, you know, most aligned with what you want? Like, is there gonna be, is it gonna be a la carte or is it gonna be their suggestion? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, they would present different options, for sure. They would look at the courthouse, they would look at the COB, they, they would visit with the sheriff again, they would visit with the state's attorney again. You, you'd get about, I'm in talking with Mr. Wesley, you'd get about probably four or five different options to look at.
Okay, well, that's good, at least. You have something to two on.
Right, right. And, and I, it's, it's been the commission's purview to treat it like an a la carte too. Commission could say we like option A with a little bit of option B, but you'd get a different option.
I think at this point, we'll just take no action right now and we'll think about it.
Very good.
Do you have other commissioners agree with that?
Sure.
Yeah, the only thing that I would add is, I mean, would it hurt to get, I know, Tom, you said that 50,000 is gonna be the best bet that we're gonna get, but would it hurt to get any other proposals from anybody else or, excuse me, bids on what it would cost?
No, ma'am, I've been wrong many times, so it wouldn't hurt.
Just a suggestion, just to put some other feelers out to see.
We can certainly put our, our request out, absolutely.
Okay.
I'll work on that.
Alright, and you can do that without a formal bid process, can't you? Based on the amount?
Yes, yes, that's, yes, we could do that, Commissioner Hagan. Very good. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'll move along to, to the guaranteed maximum price. So bid package two. At the last commission meeting, the board had approved bid package number two. So what you have before you is the guaranteed maximum price for that bid package, which basically it locks. Which basically it locks in the prices that were part of that bid package. And it also amends bid package number one. So the total guaranteed maximum price of construction costs for the Youth Assessment Center and Correctional Center expansion. Would be thirty-three million, one hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred and three dollars. That doesn't take into account change orders or, you know, things like that. But it locks in that price of construction engineers. Ms. Womstead has looked at it as well, didn't indicate any concerns, but would be looking for a board approval to accept the guaranteed maximum price and chair signature.
Any questions from anybody? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make.
I would, I'll second that motion.
Okay, this, had Mr. Commissioner Ingean makes a motion, Commissioner Peach seconds. Okay, I think we'll do a roll call on this. Commissioner Ruston, no. Commissioner Hagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingean?
Yeah.
Commissioner Peach?
Yes.
And myself is yes.
Very good, I'll move on to some updates for the commission's awareness. Next would be the Epitome Energy Township Assistance Program application, Mr. West is still here, good. So, so city officials reached out to Mr. West and myself last week, asked if the county would apply on behalf of the city for, for Township Assistance Program grant. If awarded the grant, the grant funds would be used for road access improvements in the Falkland Township area around the, the construction site where Epitome. Energy would be built, so the soybean crushing plant. And, and this does fall under the, the scope, because this would support improving and bolstering the corridor and the value added agriculture in Grand Forks County. One shortcoming is that the township doesn't levy at least eighteen mils, and I know preference is given to those that do levy eighteen mils, but. We did submit for the application on behalf of the city and we'll, we'll see what happens. And then I've asked Mr. Ingean to come back at some point in the near future and update the commission, because the last time the commission heard from him. Commissioner Ruston and Commissioner Hagan worked on the board, so I think it'd be good for the board to get a re-pressure.
Yeah.
Updating the board on the courthouse dome rehab projects, and good news. The first round of testing is completed, the results were, were more positive than expected. As of last Wednesday's meeting, less repairs needed than initially, initially thought, based on those tests and inspections. It's more structurally sound than anticipated. So again, good news, news, lots of corrosion on the metal frames, so looking at cleaning and, and coating to prevent further corrosion. Which, which would lead to more problems in the future, of course, looking at creating some better access in the dome. So that facilities department and others can have better access for inspections. Temp, temporary mitigation this fall is still the goal, so that it stops snowmelt and rain from leaking through and, and damaging the interior. The next round of tests and inspections are forthcoming. Shouldn't disrupt court proceedings, and we should have, start getting some costs and estimates into the rehab, hopefully by tomorrow's. Owners Architects Meeting, so hopefully have some numbers to bring back, any, any, any questions from the board on, on that, but it's going, it's going well, so.
Any other questions from anybody?
Historical Society have anything to say about our temporary?
So, not yet, Miller Dunwitty is in communication with the state Historical Preservation Group. The local here hasn't had much to do with it, it's more so through the state, because the covenant that, when you know about it, is on, is on the dome. So it's more, more so through the state and they're aware. Yes, sir, sorry for that pain point, Commissioner Ruston.
Yeah, that's a nice twist.
I'll, I'll keep moving along if there's no other questions, I'd like to be briefed. Myself, Ms. Womstead, Commissioner Ingean, Ms. Leon and Mr. Burke from the Foreign Investment Risk Review Office met with Whiskey Creek last week. The intent of the meeting was to update them on the county's amended wind farm policy. And to discuss, now that the moratorium was over, what their next steps would be, but also to discuss the fact that the base is on the highly sensitive. Base list now. Long story short, after we walked through everything with Whiskey Creek and asked them, when do you anticipate applying? They said it's gonna be at least another one to three years before they intend to apply for an application permit. So. Really not, not much to be done until we hear from them again, which could be one to three years. Commissioner Ingean or Ms. Womstead, anything? To add? Frugal meeting, and everything is fine, and they're reassessing.
Commissioner Ingean, you're on mute.
Yeah, I, I got it off mute now, so I can start over, I always do that. I was a little surprised that they weren't pushing it a little more, but I think. Dan Burke was right some time ago, when he said sometimes these companies. When they realize it's gonna be a regulatory issue like CFS. They kind of quietly go away, so maybe they'll come back and try to, to go ahead, but. I think they've sent some opposition. On a number of fronts, not, not just the foreign ownership, so. We'll just have to wait and see what they try to do and analyze it then.
Very good, just kind of wrapping up my report, just a couple more items, Generals Ruin Findlay, the, the county's base retention consultants, they're, they're gonna be in the. In Grand Forks next week, Ms. Leon, as, as also she serves as the brick coordinator. She's working meetings for the generals with Colonel Monroe and three nineteenth Constance Wing. KBR, which will be managing the, the Range Hawk Program, General Tomics, Northrop Grumman. And essentially, we, we will task them with a SWAT report to close out their time with the county. And give us, give us some road aheads and how we can continue to advocate for Grand Forks Air Force Base. Chief of Staff of the Air Force will also be in town next week for the UAS Summit. Mr. Ingean and I have been invited to, to brief the chief of staff next week on the Grand Sky project and, and a couple other, other meetings with, with the chief, so. Excited to do that. And then. October seventeen, November seventh, commission meetings, I, I won't, I won't be here, I'll be out of town, but. The November seventh is, I'll be at the Association of Defense Communities Installation Innovation Forum. And the reason I bring that up is the Secretary of the Air Force Office for Installations and Environment. We, that office owns the BRAC and Strategic Mission Portfolios. At this conference, there's gonna be an EOL session. And SAF, the deputy SAF, specifically asked that Grand Forks County be on that panel to talk about. The Grand Sky EOL, and as Commissioner Ingean knows, both the SAF and, and Air Force Civil Engineering. They regard Grand Sky as their poster child for EOL. Also gonna be talking more about CFS and foreign investments around military installations. And then we'll meet with the Secretary of the Air Force as well, so more to come on that, but won't be here for the, the next two commission meetings. Other than that, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for county administrator? All right, state's attorney. Okay. Committee reports, Commissioner Ruston, nothing else, okay, Commissioner Hagan?
The library has officially got their van, and it is all wrapped with the library logo, which is awesome. So if you want to see it, you can stop by the library, where they put it on their social media today. And the only other thing was the groundbreaking ceremony for the Career Impact Academy. Mr. Ford and I were there yesterday afternoon, I snuck in the back, but. I think it's gonna be such an amazing facility for, for our community and the surrounding area, so I'm excited to see that come to fruition, so that's it.
Commissioner Peach?
I have nothing. I have nothing to report.
Commissioner Ingean, your turn.
Okay, I've served on the nominating committee for EDC, Economic Development Corporation. People like the mayor and the county representative don't have any stake in being officers in the organization, so we get appointed to the nominating committee every year. So we've done that, and that'll be coming out with whoever is selected for various things in the near future. Then I've also had meetings with. The people who were involved in the. General Alvin's visit and the later visit to the Pentagon, kind of planning how to go about. Getting as much information as we can to these generals who are. Experienced people, but new to the posts and need to learn about Grand Forks, so that's. Wasn't a particular committee meeting, but I was invited to that, so. Other than that, the Whiskey Creek thing was the only other meeting I attended this week, so. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ingean, I will remind you that the October seventeenth meeting. I will not be here. I will be in the air somewhere between Fargo and Denver.
We've already planned kind of a simple party.
You'll be in charge.
Sir, I won't be there.
Huh?
I won't be there either.
On the seventeenth? Are you going with me or what?
I don't even have cellphone access, I'll be hunting.
I won't have access either.
There's no, there's no service where we outcut.
So you're gonna be at least one or eight, right?
We'll, we'll struggle through somehow.
I think we'll figure it out.
Gotta have three, Commissioner Hagan, Peach, and Ingean. So, all right, as far as. Yeah, every, every Tuesday, construction meeting out at the Correctional Center and, and. Youth Correctional Center out there, so. That meeting got kind of long today. I can, epoxy floors and cement floors, and anyway, so, anyway, that's about all I had. Unfinished new business. At a monitor.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you have an appointment for the North Dakota State Fair Delegate. They request that by October fifteenth. You're invited to the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, it's twenty twenty-two, guess that's twenty twenty-three. Their letter is wrong, apparently, their annual meeting. I think November sixteen. So is there anybody that would like to be the North Dakota State Fair Delegate? I don't think they had one.
Did we? Anybody interested in it? Yeah, that would be a fair speed.
Oh, okay, someone from NDSU Extension.
Yeah. All right, doesn't look like anybody's interested in that one. Shell Deal.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ross and commissioners, this is a little bit of a housekeeping piece. During the budgeting, there was approval for, to move forward with Public Safety Plan. Weeks of Andy Purse for qualified employees. During the process to get everything set up, we have to have a separate motion. And then we have a statement that we have to provide with our documents. So what I'm asking for is a motion to have Grand Forks County join the Public Safety Defined Benefit Retirement Plan. For all qualifying employees effective January first, two thousand twenty-four. And with chair's signature on all required forms, and I'll have the, the forms, there's one where we'll. Have some conversation with Ms. Womstead and Purse to make sure we have the accurate language before the signature.
Okay. Any questions, or do I have anybody who wants to make a motion to approve that?
Mr. Chair, I would move forward on that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Peach makes the motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Goodbye, Commissioner Hagan. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All states sign, motions carried.
Thank you.
Correspondents.
And members of the commission, the resolutions that will be voted on at the delegates' meeting at the North Dakota Association. Of Counties meeting that I will attend on Tuesday morning are before you, and if you have any comments on any of those resolutions, let me know before Tuesday morning.
Okay. We all have copies of that, so. All right, we will do that. Commissioner Hagan?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
Second, second, Commissioner Ruston, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All states same side, motions carried.